We're waiting for one more member to show up and for our microphones to show up, so be patient. We'll start soon.
Now, I'm going to officially open the Nice Meeting of Wayne Main Planning Board, April 11th, 2024. Going to begin the roll call. Everyone, please state your name.
Kene Brad.
Mitchell Cobb.
Ed Burden.
Doug Ferris.
Andrew Burrow, Chair. Edward, Edward's Vice Chair, and tonight. Gee, I think we'll need to serve as a voting member since they have, since we're short.
I'm on the call, but.
Please mute yourselves, everybody, online.
Well, this is Tom on the call saying I'm participating in the meeting.
Sorry about that, Tom. Go ahead.
You want to be a voting member here tonight, Tom? We, you are allowed to if you would like.
Sure, if that's not a problem for you guys.
Fine with us. So, Tom Moran, also here, attending the meeting. Okay, does any, does any member have reason to recuse themselves from tonight's discussions? Anything on the agenda to meet? Okay, if not, then our first order of business will be to approve last, last month's meeting minutes. Does anyone want to have any discussion about last month's meeting minutes? And actually, the month before.
Is that a discussion about the whole meeting or just the minutes?
Just the minutes.
Just the minutes.
Okay. Then if there's no discussion about the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion, we approve the last two minutes, the last two meeting minutes.
A second?
Alvin Feder. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, motion, motion to approve the minutes passed. So, now coming to the first item on our agenda. This is the, this is the Jellystone application, continuation of the public hearing from last month's meeting. First, well, first, I would like to discuss with the board. So, as everybody's aware, you know, it's maybe aware as well. I believe the applicant is aware there's been some lack of clarity around whether we adequately noticed tonight's meeting because it was rescheduled from last week's. There's a seven day, seven day notice, basically. The original meeting was noticed correctly, clearly, but this rescheduled meeting, not necessarily, and there were some inaccuracies in the website copy in some locations. So, the suggestion from the Towns Council is to, who is Brandon Baser representing Town Legal Counsel in front of here, from Perkins Thompson. And the suggestion that Jim Brandon had, their advice was that we continue the public hearing at this meeting because we said we would. And that we go on completeness of the application tonight, but postpone actual board deliberation until my suggestions, the may even, for the way of at least two weeks, to even fully properly notice the public, the final public hearing, properly, kind of public hearing. So, do they really understand proposed process? Are there questions?
So, we want to delay the vote because there was a weather delay last time.
And so, the subsequent meeting was, was potentially not properly noticed. And so, a decision that we made at this meeting could be argued to be invalid because of inadequate notice.
And our council is the one advising us to postpone or?
Our legal counsel will advise us to postpone so that our, so that our opinion cannot be questioned and perceived with fairness.
Mr. Chair, I can clarify anything, certainly, like, if you're.
Please.
No, no, here, got a portable microphone.
Pretty big, Brandon Baser with Perkins Thompson, so there are a couple of potential issues. But more importantly, not so much the noticing of the postponement, but looking at both the subdivision ordinance and the conditional use ordinance. Back in March, we opened up the public hearing, even though technically it wasn't appropriate at that time because we had not done the site walk yet. The public hearing should only be opened once the application's deemed complete, which you're doing tonight. So, our recommendation is, assuming that the board finds that the application at post-site walk is complete, deem it complete, we had opened a public comment at the March, and continue that tonight if, if the board wishes, allow people to continue to speak, but then schedule what I'll call the official public hearing for at least two weeks out. Additionally, there should be at least a seven day notice of the completeness determination, a mail to the others pursuant to the ordinance. So, yes, there was some questions about whether or not it was properly postponed, it's probably not, but more importantly, the ordinance requires public hearing after the board completeness. So, that's really the receivable issue that we focus on, if we close the seat, if that makes sense. So, no deliberation until we do that proper scheduling. So, perfectly fine, the board wants to hear from the public comment, it's informed from the applicant, but no deliberation throughout the year. So, that's.
I just like to ask this question. I just want to make sure that we're giving proper notice to that the board should decide tonight that the application is complete. Wasn't there a prerequisite for how much within that period of time, how much notice we must get before we deliberate or something like that?
So, for, under the conditional use approval, want to see if we, if others needed to be seven days written notice of the determination of completeness. And then you need to schedule under the subdivision, a public hearing. And we're recommend, again, it's seven day notice, but we, we're saying at least two weeks out to give that seven days, you couldn't. But by the way, your kind of age, you couldn't schedule for next Thursday, for example. So, it was either two weeks or at a convenient time, which would be the may be it. So, it's really at the discretion of the board.
So, my proposed agenda for tonight, it is up to us, we can decide what we should do, we don't necessarily have to follow. Personally, I'm inclined to, my suggested agenda would be to discuss voting completion tonight, next. Then ask the applicant wishes to present their responses to the feedback so far. Thank you. So, then ask the applicants if the applicant would prefer to present their responses to the feedback they receive so far at this meeting or the next public hearing. And then open it up for public comments. If folks wish to comment at this meeting, there will be public comment at the next meeting as well. But this would simply be one. How do folks feel about that proposal?
They've given written, written response to our original public hearing. What we're doing is giving them an opportunity to respond to any additional information. Is that a correct statement?
Basically, to present their response into the, or we could ask them, say, if they presented with the questions, whether they would rather do it tonight, or whether, whether they would rather hear what was said tonight and just do it once. I would certainly leave that to the applicants.
I agree with them.
Forcing them to present to us. Anybody else have thoughts on?
No, I'm in agreement with what you, what you've added. And what the council suggested. Is there anyone on Anderson Lake or the town of Wayne that isn't aware of this particular issue? I, I, we're kicking the can down. Okay, and maybe my mom in Bridgeton, but I'm guessing, but okay. Since the legal stuff could trip us up.
Please use the microphone, they can't hear you.
Since the legal stuff could possibly trip us up. I will go along with your plan, but I'm pretty sure everyone knows about what's going on with Jellystone. Call me crazy, but I'm that guy, so, okay.
I, I'm just, my interest is in protecting the legal integrity of the decision, right? So, okay, folks are willing to go along now. Then our first item would be to discuss the completion of the application. We have completed, so we found it provisionally complete. And we had several requests, which the applicants provided answers to, and the last meeting, we said that we were satisfied with those answers. And so, the only thing lacking was completing the site visit, which we concluded. So, given that, I'm not aware of any outstanding requests regarding completeness that we have. Are we ready to find the application complete, or do we have further discussion?
Does defining and determining completeness afford, that is the process question, afford us the opportunity to ask follow-on questions from the last time we met? It does?
Yes.
Very well. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions from the board? Do we have, can I have a motion to find the Jellystone, the Jellystone permanent application completes?
I make a motion.
I make a motion to find the Jellystone application complete. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Alvin Feder.
Tom, are you there? Coming. Tom?
I mean, if he's opposed, we won't vote him anyway.
He seems to be having a problem. Tom, you are muted.
I'm unmuted now, but you did crash for a couple of seconds there.
We voted, Tom, we voted on whether we were, we voted to find the application complete.
Yes, and I heard, I heard Doug's comments, and then you guys crashed right after Doug was struggling with the microphone there, so, to get some words out. But yes, I agree. Let's, let's take that plan. I mean, we have to do what we have to do, and, and we have counsel for a reason, right? So, yes, I vote that the application is complete. So.
Great. Thank you. Then it is unanimous. We found the application complete. Next order of business. For the applicant, would you prefer to present your responses or have us discuss your responses tonight, or would you prefer to postpone that until the next meeting?
There, it's gonna be a quick answer.
If you take that, why, the mobile mic?
Yeah, we're, we're happy to respond at the next meeting. Okay, we did submit the information to you, happy to answer any questions, however, but we'll get on, go back to the next one.
Okay, thank you. So, if the board still agrees, then we can pull off and have them present, if they can ask any questions next time. So, we can do that all at once. Sure, yes, thank you for the response, very detailed. We appreciate it. And I believe that response is available publicly. Is it on the website?
We'll put it up.
Okay, we'll put the response on the website so that people have access to that. Okay. Does the board have any other comments or business before we open this up for public comments?
So, we can ask questions?
Yes.
Okay. Dan?
I just want to avoid getting into actual deliberations on merits. That's not for this evening. That's for the public hearing. That's gonna be next.
So, there's a separation between asking for information, which is what we can do now, versus discussing the merits, which we do after we close the public hearing. And that part will postpone until next meeting.
So, I can't ask any follow-up questions to Jellystone tonight about what was discussed in the last several meetings.
You can ask follow-up questions, great, if I'm wrong, but not debate, we're not entered into debates amongst the board.
No, that's fine.
Follow-up information, questions, are okay?
If we're not getting, the board should avoid getting into the merits of the, you deemed it complete. So, if you have more information you'd like to get from, which should have probably been done before you voted on the completeness, but the deliberation is for the public hearing, which you will be voting on, scheduling, presumably for the may be.
But, for example, questions on their responses to that?
If you'd like to. The board should just not deliberate.
I understand.
Microphone.
I understand. So, again, can I ask Dan any questions while here tonight?
Yes. Yes, and also, it's not necessarily, we do decide. So, council tells us what they think is wise. We don't have to do that.
Great. Dan, the concern last several meetings were about RVs and mobile homes. It's been my understanding that the expansion of Jellystone would be family X pulls in on Friday with their RV, they go into a campsite, they hook up, they spend the long weekend. Tuesday morning comes, they hook up, they drive away. Is that the concept of operations for this expansion? Or is it, as it was mentioned last time, a series of permanent mobile home structure, RV type fixtures that family X will show up, sign for a key and go to? Which is it?
Like, they're. It's one to be missed. It's going to remain an RV campground, just as it is today. And the letter that I supplied explains what that means.
So, Dan, are there numbers in that mix? I mean, in your response, because I have not read it.
Not responsive, it is clearly labeled on the plans, mother.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so, to my guess, we're gonna officially open. Um, okay, so to my guess, we're gonna officially open this up for public comment. Um, yeah, so just, uh, the ground rules as we've had it before. You can ask people as, as normal to keep your questions to three minutes after everyone has had, who has, who wishes to speak, has spoken. People will be given an opportunity to speak again if you wish. Um, my big request would be if you have made your point in the last meeting and you have nothing substantially new to say, then I would just ask you to respect the board and the public's time and trust that we have heard what you said. And we, we've heard you clearly. We're taking it into consideration and there's not a need to repeat things that have already been said in previous meeting. And also keep in mind that there will be another opportunity for public comment at the next meeting. Um, and also, I another general ground rule applies to both the public and the board and the board members. Please remember that this is not a discussion of merits particularly between us and the applicants, so please keep things to questions. Give the applicant time to respond. This is not meant to be discursive, um, so please don't jump in during the response. Ask your question. Then let the applicant or the board respond. Um, and then if you have follow-up, you can bring that in your next question, just to be clear, that applies to us as well. Um, okay. So any questions on procedure for the public comment portion?
I do.
Yes, Jim.
Time limits.
That three minutes, except.
Okay, and then right here, then these.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, we will alternate between in-person and online.
And if they would put in the chat box their interest in, um, talking.
Yes, please put in the chat box if you're interested in talking, if you're an online attendee. Right, so. Okay, and since they had a question, so I'm gonna give it to Ed.
I'm just gonna ask you, again, policy question with regard to Jellystone RV project matters. What, what is the, uh, in your presentation that we received said that the splash pad or the pool area was 95 feet from Bogbrook. Does that measure with the new uh, supplement that we go on? So we're 95 feet to Bogbrook. Is that correct? That was on page two. What was the, the, I wanna follow that, the, what is the existing conditions? On page two of your project narrative. Okay, sorry, I didn't describe the right thing.
Can you support it if it's easier?
Yeah. Oh yeah, existing conditions. Uh, Bogbrook is to the south and used as close as Bogbrook is approximately 95 feet from the pool area. But as, as it exists today. So it's not with the new splash pad?
Correct.
Okay, so all right, we'll be moving closer then. Is that, no?
Nope.
It's not moving towards the, we're actually pulling things away from the wall. Okay, but not this. It's already 95 feet.
Correct.
Okay. Second is just a sort of a policy statement. The phase two request was for a doggy park. Can you tell me what's the, what's the current policy with regard to number of people that can inhabit a campsite? I mean, I know each site is different. You're, you know, thank you.
The average site, uh, is average of four people, but it does support up to eight.
Okay.
But the average site is four.
And some of them support up to 10, is that correct?
No, cabins are less, or park models, um, are less, and we deal with that, uh, ARPU, but yes.
And how many guests can you, uh, can each site allow?
A maximum of eight.
Maximuming.
Maximum of eight or, that the average is four.
How many dogs can they bring?
Two per site max.
Two per site?
Yeah.
Okay, it's all okay.
Okay, um, anyone in the audience have new comments they're looking to me? No questions? Yes.
Hold on.
Uh, can you grab the, you did that to? Where are they? Or does she need to be over there for them to see them?
No, where we should talk to her.
Um, Betsy Clark, working Sweet Road. Wayne, um, with regards to the site visitation, I know you deemed the application complete, but I just like, would like to go on record as saying that, um, I felt that that site visitation was inadequate. That property over there is 79 acres and 70 acres in the town of Wayne. Um, and um, the subdivision regulation, section, section H, number three states the non-site inspections required. So the land is not to be covered by snow and, but the board has to readily observe lot boundaries, location of soil test areas, character of the land, or other physical features of the parcel. So we got there. I was one of the public there. We were told not to speak, which I understand those rules. Uh, we were told that the site would just be a half an hour. That's 80 acres, 79 acres with a half an hour. We had four trucks, formed a caravan, drove around, stopped by predetermined stops. Got out of trucks, stood in the access road of the, the already existing, pre-existing roads in the campground. Um, we didn't get close enough to any of the boundaries to, to see any of the boundary lines. We didn't see any of the soil test areas. We saw some of the character and some of the physical features of the existing camp sites, but we did not walk through the woods and see the character and the physical characters of the land where this development is to take place. Um, we did see that in the existing campground, you are numbered vernal pools. Um, in some of the areas where there were vernal pools, there were RVs that are seasonal RVs that are parked there year round. Even hanging over some of the vernal pools, there were campfire pits that were hanging over into the vernal pools that are existing there. Um, we did not get a chance to see whether or not there are other vernal pools in the area of the camp, of this parcel that is yet to be developed. Um, we didn't get a chance to see the glacial deposits or the large boulders. There's lots of them over there. Um, did not walk through the woods to see what that looks like. You did not see what the slope of the land looks like. You didn't see where those safari tents or the, the tent area is in the the picture of the land and how much excavation is gonna have to happen. You didn't see the slope of the land where all of those park models are gonna be placed, stating, you know, stationary park models. Um, how much excavation is gonna be needed for that area to be terraced and leveled and then studied? And, um, then also there was one area where there's an access road going over wetland, and yet it was said that there would be no pulver, so I have a question as to how that's gonna work. Anyway, um, in that subdivision regulation says that if conditions exist to be inadequate inspection, time limits can be extended. Um, I believe it was in the medical inspection.
Thank you.
We don't.
Nobody online. Other public comment?
Ted Tucci requests to speak.
Go ahead, Ted.
Hi, Mr. Goral. Hi, uh, good evening, planning board members. I have a, a question with respect to the site visit. Is there, is there any site plan or map that shows the number and location of vernal pools on the 79 plus acres? Um, where the expansion is proposed for the 94 plus, uh, park model RV units?
Thank you, Ted. Does the applicant have an answer to this?
Yes.
In your, uh,
uh, the entire property, all of the acres that are across the street, has been mapped by, uh, VHB. The wetlands, what the vernal pools, um, there may be some misunderstanding of what a vernal pool is. I will present that next time, but, uh, we're not impacting vernal pools.
And is the, um, results from VHB that included in the slot on permanent? Will we have access to those results? Okay, and, um, just Ted's probably already aware of this, but I believe there was a joint Wayne Reedfield survey of vernal pools sometime, sometime back that should be available at the town office. Um, if anybody cares to investigate, uh, everybody cares to look at that, find it, and see if there's any vernal pools there that are nearby, if anyone wants, but, um, that resource does exist. Any other public comment? Anyone online, one person?
I just.
Yes.
I just, I don't know how these answer that.
Hold on a second.
Martha, how about see the point of the hour of Wayne? Um, I mean, Betsy's concerned about whether you felt like did you all feel like it was an adequate um, look over of what was going on with the the application and did you feel like it was, um, complete or did you feel comfortable making these decisions with what you saw?
So I think this bears slightly, I don't wanna go too much into like a dialogue back and forth here, but I will note that the board, um, had full power to ask for what they would like to see.
We've visited.
Uh, yes, the board has visited several times, or yeah, we've visited before, um, and the board had the ability to request, make what we wished, so.
Thought it was.
I, I would say yes, because like Ed said, when we were doing phase one, um, your predecessor, Jeremy, we, we were up there several times on golf carts and going all around, and we spent a lot of time there. And so I would say, and also some of us grew up here, so we know that land, and I would say, yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, I did have one question, um, for the applicant. The dog park that was on site visit, uh, it was the closed area was near a stream, which I don't see on this, um, on the title sheet, and I'm not great at reading topographic maps. So my question is just, I'm assuming the borders of the dog park will not overlap that stream. Any other comments? Or shall we?
I think in your narrative, you described you replacing a lot of septic systems. I'm, I'm only asking this because I saw on the thing there were three of them uh, that were unknown, depicted on one of the maps. And those would be replaced.
You can see those on the existing dishes plan. There, we did a full inventory of all the septic systems that are out there. Given the age of the property, the development, some of those are just so old, there's no approvals associated with them. There's no information at all. Um, we're actually taking that and moving that sewage away. So those, those beds that are there today, those three are gonna be, um, basically no longer, um, used.
Thank you. Then if we have no further questions or comments? Last comment? Oh. And
Your sort of pointed information, Ken's following Wayne, um, for the vernal pole survey that was done for Wayne in conjunction with Reedfield. It's my understanding that, that the vernal pools were only located on land that the owners gave permission for the surveyors to visit. So just need to keep that in mind. I don't know if they gave permission or not, but, but not necessarily not a vernal pole there, just because it's not on the map.
Okay, great, thank you. Good clarification. Um, so anybody interested should refer to the VHB survey, survey to get access to that. Um, okay. Then do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Or no, I just get to say it's uh, not doesn't help the caring, but how do I phrase this?
Um, so you'll, you'll wanna make a motion to continue the public hearing and schedule a public hearing, an additional public hearing, whatever your main meeting date is.
So for the board, I guess that my proposal will be to do this at our May. How do people, that gives us, if we want two weeks notice, today is the 11th. Yeah, that is pretty close to the May meeting.
It's ahead of the May meeting.
It's Thursday, um, very popular calendar.
Name me every, the question.
May second.
May second.
Yeah.
You want a motion?
Um, well, I mean, does anybody object to that? Does that feel, and you can, anybody can speak to this. Um, any opinions, Tom? Sometimes.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm listening, and, and so I guess a question, just to clarify, right? So what we're saying is, since there's been some additional discussion and information presented at this meeting, we're going to give the public another opportunity to respond to that. If they weren't here, uh, they can read it potentially in the minutes uh, from this meeting, but we're gonna give another opportunity for people to talk, just so that w- we will be avoiding any issues if someone says we didn't have the opportunity. Is that pretty much what we're doing? Doug used the term kick the can. I, it, it does seem that's what we're doing, but if we're doing
That's where, so we're, we're, my understanding is we're kind of, we, we need to give an opportunity for public comment at the next meeting, because that's what we're actually going to be doing, the deliberation. Um, it's basically that we need, yeah, it's kick and can in the sense, in one sense, in another sense, it's making sure that they're not procedural. Uh, yeah, that, that are, that our decision does not get questioned on procedural grounds. Um, so that's the reason for the additional meeting. Given we have additional meeting, I understand that we need to have public comment at it.
Yep, yep, yep.
And I, I, I do. This question is really just, are we, do we wanna do that at our May meeting?
I, I think everybody in this room would love to see things. What's the right way to say it? Just to know what's going on instead of just, just, just delaying and delaying and delaying. Um, but okay, I, and I think you, you covered the base. I wanna call you out. Uh, Andrew, because you mentioned early on when you talked about comments. I, I wanna, I wanna reiterate what you said for everybody. We, we've been listening. We, we believe we've we've done multiple site visits. We, we're familiar with the property. We've listened to the applicant. I think we're pretty clear on the stuff they presented. We've we've listened and learned on both sides from, from, uh, folks who've spoken up and brought up issues. So I think we're really, we, we feel like we've had a microscope on this for quite a while, so I don't want anybody in the room on either side of, 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 uh, this issue. of, 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 uh, this issue, uh, to think that, you know, we're sitting back and, and not paying attention, so I if I was in the room, I'd be saying the same thing, I just, I wish I was, but I'm, I unfortunately I can't be there tonight. But, but yeah, we're paying rapt attention to both sides. So I think we're familiar and I think everybody's familiar, as Doug pointed out as well, I don't know anybody who's not familiar with this topic, but um but all right, if the right thing to do is to, to keep it open for uh another another meeting and give other interested parties the opportunity to comment, then I guess that's what we have to do, right?
Uh, that, that is my, my suggestion, I definitely sympathize with them. Desire to not have it anger, but um, so is there further discussion or review, shall we plan, shall we have a motion to continue the public hearing? In um, on our very scheduled May meeting? And publicly notice it. Instruct the CEO town office to publish adequate notice and the, uh, the butter notice, is that something that the applicant will be Okay, is the applicant comfortable sending out the butter notice?
Just said it.
Yes.
I appreciate the microphone.
Gotta turn it off because there was an opportunity.
I can do that, sure. I'll take that and be done.
Uh, again, just brand amazing with Perkins Thompson, um, just a point of clarification, just so the board is aware, article two B four of the zoning, it, the onus is actually on the applicant, so you deemed it complete this evening. At that point, the applicant shall have seven days from such determination to notify by certified mail all property owners whose properties within five hundred feet of where the proposed uses to be located of the application for conditional use permit, the applicant shall provide due to plan will the names and addresses of all such property owners who put that notice by certified mail had been required here and as required here has been provided, so it's typically, I know some towns will do it on behalf of the applicant and just charge it back, but the, the ordinance puts the the technical requirement of seven days on, on the applicant. Thank you, um, good clarification.
Just, just to say that May second for myself, I won't be available. Um, if you definitely want to be here to the next meeting.
Um. What are all the people's?
He cannot be here.
He cannot be here, um. Other days that week, are we? Do we have availability every day, is that a week on, I think we come out? But like calling for a week. Or we could postpone a week till the eighth, or sorry, the ninth.
In fairness, again, he's been through a lot and done everything we've asked him to do, so I think we should adjust.
Yeah, I would like to add something here, um, like my question to you is, would you prefer to look at happening at like on a Wednesday instead of Thursday or postpone the week you do anything instead of then? I don't know, the schedules, I would prepare a postponed week. That worked. Um. Does that work for you?
May nine.
Uh, May nine, yes.
Right, right.
Okay. Um, so then the proposal will be May nine. Um, with the applicants sending out notice the butters. We will publish notice at least two weeks in advance. Um, we will update the sound website, the notices in the town website to be well correct and the accurate time. Uh, we'll do that at least two weeks in advance, um. I hope that's it. If nobody has
You got, you're not going to vote.
May 11th.
Continue.
Yes. Um, did you have further questions?
I've got a motion.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing on May nine, uh, next scheduled evening. Second.
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
There.
Then, uh, would this item close?
Would you, this item's closed, correct?
Yes.
Would you take a five minute break for the participants to exit? We've got a few uh technical, not technical, but scheduling questions and comments we got to work on in terms of land use ordinance.
Okay.
So I'd, I suggest a five minute break and then
And are we going to have any? Um. Presentation on, from the Are you guys going to talk at all about the
Well, we're going to talk, but we haven't been able to do anything like
Okay.
We'll talk. Five minutes break.
Okay, so we are taking a break, Jellystone business is done, the board is going to move on to other business. Public hearing portion of this meeting is closed, if it's still a public meeting, if you wish to, which to listen to us talk about scheduling and et cetera. Then we'll do it this day, um, but there'll be no more discussion of Jellystone's last. Alright.
You can leave the chairs for right now. Yeah, please.
Thank you, though, but thank you.
The person who won, the judge is
We'd appreciate it if everybody would move out, if you visit to the lobby or outside, so we can move on.
Chip, you want to ask people to drop off the call as well?
Well, anybody that's on the call, the Jellystone uh is complete for now, till next meeting. Uh, we'll just be talking about
Pickboard.
Land use ordinance stuff from here on.
Ms. Kathy, how are you?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Follow what's going on. I think run like you guys visited a lot of times. Okay. Last year.
Yeah, they did.
Under your fault, right?
Retired.
Yes.
Longer.
Yeah. Actually, I, I just went to school and
Yes, reconvene on.
Slide on. My parents were there, we lived there.
Ladies and gentlemen, whilst you stay, we're going to have to conversation outside.
Yeah, you were in the Asian country, yeah? Yeah.
Tommy, you on?
Yes, I am.
How you doing, man?
I'm all right, how you doing, man? I was just texting you.
Okay. Well, I, I hope you guys are doing all right.
We're back on live, online.
Uh, we're, we're okay, it's um, she was ninety-six years old.
Oh, God, wow.
Sharp as a tack, but uh her just body started giving out on her a little while back.
Father time, cruel joke.
Right, right at the eclipse too, so it was, it was almost planned, it was pretty wild.
And you're going to join the board? Are you going to join the board?
No.
No. No, public meeting.
Okay, this won't take long, so we can get your attention, appreciate it.
For many, um, years.
Give you guys an update, as you know, we've had issues which have really become obvious in this past application with our ordinances and not just the land use ordinance, but multiple of our ordinances have um a lot of areas where they conflict with each other, as we've learned, there's a lot of areas that aren't complete, many of these ordinances were written back in the sixties and seventies. Um, so we have retained, I think, as you know, General Code, which is an organization that's working with many towns and cities up here in Maine to take our ordinance um, ordinances, there's five, six or seven of them. And they're going to take the RV park one, the subdivision one, um, and other ones within this town. They'll take them, they're going to put them in an online format. They're going to get me the link to it, the, the bones of it next week, and I'm going to share that all with you and we'll probably have a few meetings with the board and maybe even a public meeting or two as we go along. And hopefully this will be the exercise that meets things that have challenged us, that will challenge us in the future, and also will answer the um the proposed moratorium questions too. So that being said, we received uh notice from the state of Maine this morning that we were granted the ten thousand dollars to fund this study. So um, kudos to us all, uh, but this is going to be a lot of work and I'm hoping, you know, we can all work together. Um, we're going to need help, the yeoman's work of, you know, the uh the land use uh ordinance in terms of affordable housing and ADU has been carried by Ed and um, Doug, that you named, and they've been working quite a bit on this, and what I'm hoping to do is get some feedback from them in the next week or so, so we can provide general code with that to get it in a format that we can start to massage it and get it not only into our ordinance, but satisfy the needs of the state. Now, in order to do that, we're going to have to have a couple extra meetings, folks, because we have pretty much left it to them, we've got official things to do before the town meeting. And in order to change, I'll get to you, in order to change um this, our ordinances to minimally fit what the state requires, it has to be heard by you all, I figure one meeting, we could have discussions, you could see the work that's going on, I'll help, you know, with editing and things like that, and get it to general code. And then we'll have to have a few meetings. Public meeting, and we're probably going to have to have a, we will have to have a public hearing uh, for people to comment on these changes, which are mandated by the state of Maine. Hopefully there won't be too much controversy with this, seeing as we're mandated to do it. Um, and then in order to get it to the town meeting, we've got to work through this rapidly and I'm going to set a schedule now, so we're on schedule. Um, we have to have our public meeting, our public hearing, and then we'll have to vote on it, which again, I don't think there'll be much controversy. And then that will go to the select board, select board's job is to um accept it and schedule a war for it for the town meeting. And we're looking at three of, three months or so that we have to get all this done in. And meeting once a month, you know, this on the docket still. We'll, I'll work with y'all to, you know, get the schedule down so we can do this. It's extremely important because we've accepted the ten thousand dollars from the state to do this. And so we got to show some results for at, at least this initial part, and I think we can do it, uh, working together, so I'm going to ask you to be open possibly to, again, to maybe one or two work sessions in the meantime. Um, so with that said, um, if there's any questions on this, I'll have one other point after this, but you're the chairman, you choose.
Um, does anybody mind if I leave with a clarification question?
Please, ahead.
Um, when you say you're trying to get this to the June town meeting?
Right.
Are you referring to the, because uh, what's the name of the company again?
General Code.
So, general code is looking at our entire ordinance.
Right.
You were not trying to get that to the June.
No, no, there's no possible way that'll ever happen.
But they're
What I'm urging them to do is is uh, take the work that's been done so far and work with us on getting that somewhat, you know, format that we can show the state that we've done some.
The ADA portion specifically.
ADA.
ADU, sorry. Yeah, the ADU, so they're going to work with us on the ADU portion.
Right.
That's what we're trying to get done for June.
I'm going to try and urge them to do.
Not everything.
No, well.
But they will, they will work.
It's going to take a good year.
Right, that was my understanding. And there's a, supposed to be a committee formed of various members to work with them.
Members of the, members of the public and possibly other boards, okay, we're going to get to that at the early stages.
Okay.
And it's nice because if they create this, it'll be done online, we'll have access to look at it and comment and do things. Ed?
First of all, I want to thank you for pushing Doug and I, it hasn't done much good, because I don't think we've got a lot done. But I will say this. You provided us with information from the town of Reedfield where they had taken this ADU, this LD ten thousand three and instituted into their, it's much more than it appears, at least to me.
Yeah.
And I think, I'm speaking for Doug, but I believe he feels the same way. We looked at it and we tried to introduce all the wording, I noticed that this company, which is not general code.
No.
Did this for Reedfield. I'm not aware what that cost them, I have no idea.
Eight thousand dollars.
How much?
About eight thousand dollars. And that entailed a lot of meetings.
I would charge ten after looking at how much it is, how much work it is.
They have, they don't have any bandwidth either at this point, every town, I believe.
Well, what you're saying is that general code, which we've hired apparently, right?
To work, to, yeah, to
Right.
Work our ordinances.
To work the ordinances, not to do this.
It's a part of their project.
But it's not, they're not doing it. They're not the one that's going to put the words and look at each one of our paragraphs of our org, current ordinances and put in the new wording for the accessory dwelling units and uh additional dwelling.
Right. So everything Ed has just said is, is accurate, and we have been, we've been hitting this since January and, and
Once a week.
Once a week since January and it's, it's, it's kind of like fun, only different, um, but a possible, two questions, Chip, one, what happens if we miss the state deadline? And two, Andy, maybe a Band-Aid solution and, and for lack of better words, is we do an addendum to our uh L U O now, and we call it the ADU addendum until we get this company in to really do it right.
That's fine.
Is, does that work?
It works because what they're going to do is take that content and insert it in. They look forward to that, so if that's the route you want to take, let's just come to some final, finality on this addendum.
Well, this addendum, I'm not real clear how we write the addendum, um, not being lawyers. You know, any thoughts on that and anybody else giving themselves on how we might accomplish? What Chip rightly says is needed, I'm not sure, if, if it doesn't get done, I, I hear two things, one, I heard that we may lose the ten thousand dollars.
Uh, that's a possibility, but
The second part is that it's going to be instituted no matter what, because it becomes law on July first, I think. Am I correct?
Yes, it's supposed to be instituted by the town.
Well, even if the towns don't do anything, it's going to be law. It is.
It's, it's, it's going to be law, but the state has strongly told us that we have to get it into our ordinance, okay, they've already given small towns They've already given small towns a year legal.
I know.
They gave it that. Um, and after that, you know, they, they've been pretty.
We're probably not the only small town that hasn't done it. We may be, but I don't think so.
Well, again, we try to do what's we gotta do. Otherwise, there are consequences, as like, believe me, as code officer.
It's gonna be difficult.
If I have this between ours and the state.
Yeah.
And the states are way out of line with what we see in everything, there could be problems.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I'm getting multiple.
Chip, I hear you, and I, I agree with you. That we've gotta do something. The issue is, how can we do it simply without our getting a law degree before this all ends? You, whether you're gonna, Andrew, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Something else?
Or is that your phone?
That's my.
Somebody was trying to sneak.
Um.
I think I have something, then, what do we do, just throw?
So, my, like, I understand, and I think this might differ a little bit from Chip's, but when I, everything that I've read, looking through these, says that the, all the language to me is clearly stated that the states, states takes precedence. There's no ambiguity about that.
Got it.
Like, once this comes into law, it's the law. They don't care what our ordinance is. Everything that I have read, does, the state clearly says towns may opt to simply allow law to override the local ordinances.
Right.
That obviously makes things very difficult for Chip.
Yeah.
In that he has to interpret, he has to do what he's asking us to do on the fly. Not a great ask for him. We also got money to change it, so I think we should do it, but I think it's important to clarify that there's not, like, a legal obligation to get something in before it becomes law, or we'll get burned, in my mind, until we have something which is actually useful for Chip. Um, like, that's useful. Or, like, the law will take precedence anyway. Um, so unless I sort of, we don't necessarily need the Band-Aid. Okay, just to be legally compliant.
Yeah, this is not for Chip. This is for the town, Wayne. A lot of things that have to do with it. But what I would say is, I hear what you're saying, but I have seen other instances with other things that the state's mandated, and if the towns don't act, doors close on what you can do to actually modify it or change it. I don't know if that's true with this. I believe it is. This is what I've been told.
Sure, maybe.
Meetings I've gone to. I would like to give it the, uh, the yeoman's chance to do it. I think we can do it. I'll work real hard with you to, you know, do what we can. It doesn't have to be perfect. It doesn't have to be legally sane and everything. We just have to show that we've made an effort to get this done, and maybe open a few doors to things that we are allowed to do. We are allowed to make things a bit different as long as they're not, um, as long as they're leaning towards more affordable housing, it's fine. We can do that. We can, you know, embellish on these, uh, regulations. We just can't make them less. And I think, you know, we, we can do that. The timeframe fits. So I, I urge you all just to work with me. I'll set up a schedule, see what we can do. But I think it's gonna take a little bit of work on all our part. Now, the second thing I wanted to bring up before I leave you with happy thoughts is that another state mandate was passed last month, signed by the governor, that basically says that mobile homes, manufactured homes, and these type of things, which we've only allowed, we only allow certain districts. And in Reedfield, we only allowed it in one district. Mobile home parks is a different thing, that's allowed. But with this new, it says, mobile homes and manufactured housing must be allowed in any land where single-family housing can be built. So basically, it opens up the door towards mobile homes and manufactured homes anywhere in the way that building can occur. That's pretty big.
What was the LD on then, you know?
I can supply to you on this time. I think I even sent it to you last week, but I'll resend it tomorrow. But that's, you know, another thing that we're not gonna get that in probably, but, you know, we're gonna have to look at, you know, instances. I have received many calls from residents, people outside of Wayne, saying, this is the law, what can we do? And I'm saying, it'll be the law in July or August, when we're ninety days away from closing a concession. Um, I talked to Maine MMA, worked with their lawyers. Everybody's scrambling to do a paper for us, but so it's just another thing, you know, towards affordable housing that we're gonna have to face, and hopefully we can maybe meld it in with what we're doing with, you know, two thousand three.
We've also got the issue of, you know, short-term rentals, which is becoming an issue around, isn't it?
It is, and it, that's, I'm glad you brought that up, because we need to get this done hopefully to a town meeting and for the town of Wayne to support it, okay? Um, that was brought up in Reedfield as they were going through this exercise, and, you know, because you know, short-term housing, Airbnbs and things do take away from, you know, affordable housing, if it's just being done for vacations and things. Um, and somebody suggested that we address short-term rentals and Airbnbs. And I pretty strongly objected to it on the basis that if you wanna get this thing passed, and you're gonna stick something in there that's gonna be a zinger, that's gonna make it controversial, and the town votes against it, we've done everything in vain if that goes down. So that's something that we should address at some point. We need to address.
Well, I'm suggesting is we may need a group session or something to do some of this. I don't think we can whip this out.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's what I've suggested.
Well, oh, yeah. It sounds like what Chip is saying is that, yes. Um, yeah.
We can schedule it, Kevin.
Like, if you guys have work, you can, if you don't, we can start from scratch, but.
Yeah, I think we should.
I've seen what they've done. They've got work. It can be used.
So it sounds like we should have a.
I'll put together, try to put together a schedule and suggestions.
Well, we, we need to put the schedule together, Chip. I think, because we need to set when we can all go, and these guys, I don't have children, I have a dog. So, you know, I'll make my schedule fit.
I mean, it sounds like you're gonna get materials for us to go.
I'm gonna try, well, I'm setting materials constantly as I get it.
Right.
What I'll try to do is just give you structure. And then you guys could be, I, I'm not gonna tell you what to read. I'm not gonna tell you how to read. I'm just gonna give you suggestions on it. You know, where we can go to hopefully get this done.
Yeah, good.
Um, but the takeaways are, is that we're doing what's required of, if this moratorium goes through, that's on the problems with our ordinances. This is gonna address that, the work in the general code. Work has started on getting LD two thousand three somewhat into our ordinance. And we've had assurances from General Code they're gonna help us. It's just, we're gonna need to work. I think we're probably gonna have, hopefully, one more meeting on Jellystone. That's gonna leave us a few meetings, but we're definitely gonna need more than two meetings.
So we should probably schedule another meeting in May, just to.
Review what we need to, what are the steps that we need to take, and how do we dissect it?
Review what we have, doesn't mean we can't do work in the meantime.
Yeah.
Like, and, you know, that doesn't have to be you two, like, we can, also, you know, we can all talk with, talk with Chip each other, see what, what we have and how we can help, but, um, we can have an explicit meeting to see what is done, see what is left to be done. Probably in May. Is that, how do people feel about that?
When you have one on the regular, on the May second, we'll move it. Find that one.
That was my thought.
You could do that.
I'm gonna be gone.
I mean, I'm also gonna be gone, too. That wasn't why I picked it.
Oh, yes.
I figured people already walked out.
Well, we have a problem scheduling. We got a problem scheduling here, too. Uh, they got, they committed to letting a dance group work here on Thursdays, that we're not meeting, so if we're gonna get extra meetings, it's probably gonna have to be a bit different day than a Thursday.
Or Wednesdays, it's fine.
Yeah.
You can be at my house.
Wednesday, May. Wednesday, May first, with Doug.
They gotta be public meetings.
Yeah.
No.
No, you're gone.
I don't think, yeah.
Gonna be a public meeting.
You're gone the whole week, too? Uh, Ed?
I guess it is, too.
Are you gone the whole week?
I'm gone from twenty-nine till the sixth of May.
Well, we'll just have to have a forum, forums three.
I mean, yeah, we don't have to have everybody. Uh, maybe we can.
Yeah, I can be gone.
Um, are you still here, Tom?
I'm still here. I, and I knew, you guys brought up the ninth before. I already know that I'll, I'll be in Dallas on the ninth, but I will dial in for that one as well, I guess.
Um, or would you be interested, so it, we're, uh, proposing having a supplementary meeting in May to, um,
Yeah, I hear. I hear. I, I could do that week of the second. Um, I can, I can do anything. I just happen to be, I'm gonna be in Dallas the, uh, the seventh, eighth, ninth, something like that, but.
Okay.
I'll call in.
So Wednesday, May first, potentially, since we don't have access to the space in the second?
Sure.
You're okay with that? Be around, Jimmy? Um, we obviously won't be voting, um, on anything. Tom will be here. We are looking for a new member for the board, just FYI. Um, Megan, Megan just resigned.
Oh, okay.
Uh, more, more duties at work, she said. Nature, nature of the work has changed.
So we're also, how many alternates do we have right now?
One.
The usually protocol is, is that alternate is asked if they'd like to replace the leaving method, the member that's leaving.
The leaving member was also an alternate.
Oh, okay, then, good. We're not losing a member then, we're just.
Yes.
We're gaining one.
Oh.
Okay.
Good news. Um, so, May first?
May first.
So this will be, so it still needs to be a public meeting, it's not a work session.
It's public, yeah.
Okay.
A public meeting.
And.
It just means if they, they're.
They can be right.
Sufficient?
Yeah.
Should we schedule a second one? Overall here?
When do we have to have this done by? Yeah, we could. Um, I guess. Um, all right. When do we have this, when do we need to move?
When's the pub, when's the town meeting?
June tenth or something?
Uh, June eleventh and twelve.
So we need a week before that for the select board, too.
Yeah.
Um, we didn't, meeting, meeting a week is a lot, but we could skip two weeks and then have one in.
The twenty-second.
I think.
Oh, May.
I think you should look in April.
Okay.
I mean, April.
Well, yeah, the next meeting.
Either the seventeen through twenty-four.
Oh.
April.
What day is that?
Those are Wednesdays, because most were doing the dance class as well.
I know, those are Thursday.
I know, that's why I said Wednesday. Um, I'm, I'm, personally, I'm available either about seventeen through twenty-four.
But I'm, I don't, I don't have to be here. Um, but next week I'm not here, which I think is the.
Can you, do we have to do a seven-day notice?
No, there's no notice necessary, no.
Just wanna make sure.
Twenty-fourth, but. Um. All right. So we're gonna do the twenty-fourth and then the first.
Okay.
Fun, fun, fun.
So the first one was. We'll have the.
I'm a little confused.
Is there any work that we have?
Well, I just, I'm trying to understand, so, so Doug and Ed have been working now for, for, for a while, December and January, February, and they've been taking our existing ordinance and trying to build on that, and I could pause there, and if that's what's been going on, might we take the state's new ordinance and work backwards from that? I, I don't know if that makes sense. I'm just trying to understand what the actual task here is.
Tom, it's a fair question, and, um, I won't speak for Ed, but it, it reads like stereo instructions, and every time you read something from the LD two zero three document, we have to find it in hours and make it fit, so that kinda turned out to be futile. And then we came up with, you know, well, hey, let's do this addendum, so maybe we just take. But I'm trying to define the scope of the task, and, and it's a fair question. What have you guys been doing? Well, we've been.
No, 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 that wasn't my question. I'm just wondering if it's easier to start with the state-blank slate in a sense, and build on that one.
Right, and where it says the state of Maine shall, boom, we insert Wayne shall. Um, but it's not as simple as that either. Ed, help me out here.
I mean, what, what the state provides is not a drop-in replacement ordinance. The state's providing.
And the state has a law. Done in Reedfield, it was exception, but they paid eight thousand dollars for it. But it was done the way we need to do it, in a sense. And it's a lot of work what they did, and I can see why they charged it. So I don't know, you gotta look at it, take a look at our ordinances, take a look at the law, and then decide how do we implement that into our ordinance? What are the steps? But we couldn't come up with an easy solution, let me put it that way.
And Ed and I are not exceptional.
No, what?
But tha, that's the task, Tom, is to take the, it's because it's a law. It's basically translate that law into our ordinances.
Right, okay.
How about ChatGPT? How about we just feed this?
That is not a horrible idea.
Gen AI to just rationalize the two documents and, uh.
Turnitin.com.
It would not do a bad, it would not do a bad job, obviously.
All right, I'll try to get information to help you out, you know, figuring out where we're gonna go with these meetings and get you whatever you need, so.
Well, if we get the four of us together, I'm sure it's.
And Chip, you've been helping a lot. It's much appreciated. One, you did mention one thing, and I just, my own. How will the moratorium affect us? I don't see how it will.
It doesn't.
It does.
It won't. It does or does not?
Well, basically, it's saying that you can't rule on anything or do anything, you know.
Okay.
Until it's lit, mitigated.
But it is, but it's specifically not in our purview.
This, yes.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not.
We actually, it's not in your. Here, without, that should have been part of the public meeting, but.
Okay.
I will just say it's not. If they pass it, it may have an effect on us. It may have an effect on things we've decided.
Okay.
But we are, it is outside of our purview. We're not to consider it.
Baltimore.
Baltimore.
Baltimore, got it. Say no more. Bridges.
Perry Potter? He, we shall not be named.
Oklahoma.
All right.
He's never written.
Um, this end of the page, Perry Potter? No?
I haven't read this, yeah.
Okay.
Guys, I'm gonna end this meeting for the people online. We appreciate you all being there. Um, peace out.
All right, guys.
Thank you, Tom. See you soon. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, Tom.